All right, we're going to open this meeting of the Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meeting. Thank you all for being here. I'm going to read a procedure here. All persons in attendance at Planning Commission Board of Adjustment Meetings are expected to comply with the following meeting procedure. Thank you in advance for helping make this manageable meeting. Copies of agenda item materials are available for public viewing on the table located at the back of the meeting room. These materials are not to leave the table so that others in attendance may view them also. Please turn phones to vibrate or off during the meeting and conduct any sidebar conversations outside of the meeting room. Interruption or other interference with the orderly conduct of the PCBOA meeting will not be allowed. Defamatory or abusive remarks are always out of order. Disruptive persons will be removed from the meeting. The Chair may terminate speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. Written material concerning agenda items must be submitted to the Environmental Services Department by 3:30 PM on the Wednesday immediately prior to the meeting date. Written materials will not be accepted after this deadline or at the meeting because the PCBOA will not have had sufficient time to review them prior to the meeting. Such material must state the agenda item for which it is being submitted and the name and address of the submitting party. The Chair will call the meeting to order and explain the meeting procedure. The Chair will read each agenda item into the record and ask the applicants to come forward to the presenter's table, state his or her name and address for the record, and explain his or her request. The PCBOA will then discuss agenda item with the applicant. The Chair will then ask for public comment on the agenda item. To facilitate an orderly, efficient meeting, there is a three-minute speaking time limit per speaker, per agenda item, unless the Chair allows the speaker additional time. The Chair may terminate the speaker's privilege of address if, after being called to order, the speaker persists in improper conduct or remarks. When the Chair recognizes the speaker, she or he may approach the audience podium and microphone, state his or her full name and address for the record, and write such on the speaker log, and then share his or her comments. The audience podium microphone must be used by this recognized speaker because the meeting is recorded. A member of the public may not donate his or her speaking time to another speaker. A speaker should state his or her comments and address the issue, not the applicant's. All comments are to be directed toward the PCBOA. Please do not repeat comments already made by previous speakers. The Chair reserves the right to ask a group of similar comments to appoint to certain comments have been submitted to the PCBOA. Please do not read them aloud during the meeting as they are already part of the record and copies thereof have been given to the Board. After everyone wanting to speak on it has done so, the Chair will close the public comment period on the agenda item. No further public comment will be taken after this point. The Chair will give the applicant an opportunity to address issues raised during public comment. The PCBOA will then continue its discussion on the agenda item and the Chair will entertain a motion on it. The PCBOA may make a motion to pass, deny, or table the item. Once a motion is made and seconded, the PCBOA will develop findings of fact for conditional use permit and variance applications, and then vote on the motion. Once a vote is taken on the agenda item, the PCBOA will move on to the next agenda item. Meetings commence at 6:00 PM and continue until all agenda items have been heard or until 10:00 PM. No new agenda item shall be considered after 9:45 PM. The PCBOA may, at its discretion, continue an item that is on the floor at 10:00 AM -- or 10:00 PM, sorry. Any remaining agenda items shall be continued to another date and time, preferably the immediately following Tuesday at 6:00 PM, and no further public notice will be provided for such a meeting continuation. The PCBOA through the Chair may modify these procedures prior to a meeting or an agenda item. Very good, thank you. All right, so Planning Commission, approval of minutes, we don't have any, correct?
Correct.
Correct. So that's out. And then we do have one Planning Commission item this month. It is the preliminary plat application of county line estates by Hubbard County HRA/EDA, southwest one quarter, the northeast one quarter of Section 3 Township 145, Range 42, Farden Township parcel, part of parcel, 07.03.01.080. Applicant is requesting to plat 40 acres into seven lots. Any questions or comments from the Board?
This is Ken. Just for the record, it's my understanding that this application meets all the requirements for lot sizes, lot whiffs, two drain fields for the subject systems, and access roads. It meets all requirements of the county ordinances.
Mr. Chair, Jeff Cadwell, Hubbard County Administrator, just here to answer any questions if you have them.
Okay, very good, thank you.
This is Tim speaking. Does the Planning Commission have to consider any... anything for the county to consider when they sell it? Do we have to come up with anything for you about making sure people know the rule of whether they need to develop within so many years?
No, sir, you don't. That's a good question. The HRA/EDA Board has reviewed the preliminary covenants related to the sale of those lots because they were... They will be sold in a way, and sold at a lower price, in a way that requires them to develop them for single-family homes within a period of time. So they will have covenants along with the sale. At the next HRA meeting, third Tuesday in July, they will approve the listing of those lots for sale, and they'll be available for sale publicly to developers or owners as long as they can meet the covenants.
So the county will be selling them individually?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I'd like to open it to public comment. Seeing no public comment, we'll close public comment. I would be open to a motion to accept this.
This is Ken. I'll make a motion that the Board recommended to County Commissions that they approve this seven-lot plot on 40 acres in Farden Township, per the record.
This is Larry, I'll second that. We have a motion and second to accept this development of this 40 acres into seven lots. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Larry, I vote aye. So the motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on to Board of Adjustment business. We do have minutes from last month on that that we need to approve.
This is Veronica, I make a motion to approve the minutes as presented for the May 19th, 2025 Planning Commission Board of Adjustment meeting.
This is Tim, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and second to approve the minutes from last month's meeting. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike, how do you vote?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Larry, I also vote aye. Minutes from last month have been approved. All right, so moving on to old business. We have a variance application 64-V-24 by James and Denise Hawes, Government Lot 11, Section 16, Township 140, Range 33, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake, parcel 21.16.03.300. Applicants are requesting an after-the-fact variance from Part 1 of Section 502.2 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a dwelling, two platforms, and a deck that are located within the 100-foot ordinary high-watermarks structure setback, and Part 2, Sections 502.2 and 801.3 of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for a subsurface sewage treatment system located within the 150-foot ordinary high-watermark setback. Name and address, please.
My name is James Hawes. I live at 19556 Edelwise, the island, Nevis, Minnesota.
Denise Hawes, same address.
Very good, thank you. Any questions from the Board to start out?
This is Ken, I think, so I have my facts straight for this discussion. My understanding that the dwelling, both platforms, the deck, and the SSTs are all in violation of setbacks for the documentation. That the new ordinary high-water level changed in October of 2006 raised about 1.6 feet. The building permit was pulled in October, about a year later, of 2007. The SSTs was permitted in October of 2007 but was never inspected, and the first violation was documented in January of 2012. Those are the basis information I have for this discussion.
When do I get my three minutes to... Now?
Now would be good.
Okay, okay. I've got a three-minute statement, I had to write it down here. I am hopeful to get after-the-fact variance today. This situation dates back to April of 2006. In my opinion, this is what happened. After purchasing the island, I started planning on to build a house on it. I wanted to put the house on a peninsula so I could have water on three sides. I knew setbacks were going to be tight, so I paid an early site visit, and Laird Hensel of Environmental Service Office came out in April of 2006. After we measured the peninsula in two spots with me holding the dummy end of the tape at a presumed high-watermark, Laird did the calculations and said that we could build a 32-foot wide house. I asked if anything's changing, he claimed no. I ran into Laird at Fleet the next year, and he told me to get my house and septic permit. I submitted both of them, and he issued me a permit. Sadly, Laird is no longer with us, and he never put anything in the file of the initial visit, but I do have my cancelled check. With everything I thought I needed, I started construction on my house. Later in 2010, we got a surprise visit, and Scott Naraville, who verbally told us that we were out of compliance. We never heard from him till December of 2011 in writing that we were out of compliance. My wife and I were shocked. I started researching why we were so out of compliance. At that point, I discovered that Minnesota DNR had moved the high-water mark up 19 inches vertically on Beltane, which put me out of compliance. Since then, the lake has not been... Since then, I've been trying to find a solution. Other factors to consider: Technology and record-keeping has vastly improved since 2006. Two, the plans submitted show the decks on the house, and only one portion of the house is 30 feet wide. Three, the Minnesota DNR survey was done in 2007, I thought, or it was accepted by the county in 2007, and the lake is at the highest point, and the lake has not been that high since. Four, since this process started in 2006, I feel like I was grandfathered in. Five, we have lived there for 15 years now. I believe our environmental impact has been minimal on the property. We only cut the trees necessary to do the footprint. The trees, shoreline, and grass are all natural around the survey. In conclusion, a lot of this was caused by miscommunication and difficult logistics. I request a full after-the-fact variance with no contingency. I thank you ahead of time for any consideration on this matter.
Very good, thank you. Is there any public comment? Seeing no one, we will close public comment. All right, we're back to the Board. Any other questions or statements?
This is Ken. Your building permit indicated about 102-foot setback. What you've built, that permit would include any decks, platforms, or anything else. Your house may fit into that 100-foot setback, but the platforms and deck do not. Okay? So clearly you built the structure or structures that do not meet the permit.
But the decks were on the plans that I gave to Laird.
I looked at the record, I don't see that. Your Exhibit F shows an outline but doesn't identify a deck of any kind, and the actual permit, the application or the drawing on the permit, I will tell you, show that any place on your structure is 102 feet. So my view is that even against the old setbacks, you build structure, decks, platforms, that are not in compliance with what the permit was.
If you look at the full set of plans, the 11-by-17, not the eight-and-a-half-by-11 that's on the county deal, the decks show that.
I'm looking at the 11-by-17, there's kind of a gray outline, it doesn't identify a deck, it doesn't say what it is, there's no indication, and that your permit draws lines and shows the distances at 102 feet. Deck or not, that's the... You should not have exceeded that.
I do believe you're talking about the Navratil 2012 survey when he came out to the property. Because I don't think we put 102 on anything.
This is Tim speaking. Could you bring up the site plan for the application, Eric?
Any place, any structure is placed, was supposed to be within that 102 feet in all directions. That's what was approved.
Is it there?
And the...
This is Tim speaking. Ken?
Yeah, sorry.
I understand what you're saying on this 102, but when this was submitted, that site plan was given to the county. So the county knew this house was going to be on that peninsula there, and nothing was done for five years? This is 2007, and the county knew this was going to be there, and it's like nothing was discovered for five years to 2012? Is that the way you...
We moved in in July of 2010.
And, not accusing anybody of anything, but it's a long time.
Typically, unless somebody reported it, it wouldn't be obvious there was a reason to go check it as a way I'd look at it. I don't know.
And we go back to where I've discussed it before, leaving measures been sub to homeowners, and not blaming anybody, but somebody... If I took five people, I've done it myself, where if somebody isn't square and they pull that tape from a different place than somebody else, it can easily be off 10 feet. That is where I'm at on that part. I just know that that was submitted to the county with that location, and you can see all the little jogs there. The county knew about it, and the only reason it happened, I think, was because of that OHW changing, and then it got caught. So, in my opinion, and I hate to say it, but I believe the county has some responsibility here, in my opinion.
This is Veronica speaking. Not to change the subject or anything, I just wanted to visit with the applicant. During lot views, I noticed that the only section that we entered your property on was where the boat docks are. Do you have any other locations on your island that you...
There's a garage, same level.
No, I don't think that's what she's after.
No.
What we do in the wintertime, the electrical came from the north side up over to the island and followed the trail up there. To do underwater drilling, it had to be within 500 feet, and that's about 425 feet. So in the wintertime, we follow the trail up to where the electrical come in from, but that's it.
And on this map, can you show me approximately, just point at what area you're talking about? You can point up there, too, it's fine. You don't have to stand, just...
Well...
Oh, right there by the garage?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry. That's a good way of saying it, yes.
Yep, perfect. Okay, so, in the wintertime, you enter right over there, but you don't... You haven't cleared away any... Anything from the shoreline that I can tell from this visual, and when we went by the boat, I didn't notice much.
That's correct.
If anything, okay. And so the only place that you have a recreational area is by where your boat docks are.
Between the boat docks, basically.
So the entire 14, 15 acres is left natural, in a natural state.
And the county has about 4,000 feet.
And so your property is currently about 20... It is, you can see at the topography that it is a little bit elevated compared to the lake, so you can tell by the little drop-off. I noticed that during lot views as well, that... Because I was looking for runoff and such towards the lake, and you have a lot of natural topography there that kind of keeps everything from running off into the lake.
I tried to point out that half the... If you look at the roof lines, they go away from the lake, number one. Number two, half the roof comes down into that platform, what they call the platform, and because it's down 24 inches in the ground, it's all sand. Last Monday, when we had three-and-a-half inches of rain, we've never had any water in the basement there, and so I think we're very... It worked out well for everybody concerned.
I agree. The way you've built it, I do understand the way you sloped the roof line and everything to keep the water directing it away from that peninsula area, I understand that. The septic, it is currently compliant, correct?
Certificate of compliance was done on it, yes.
And it... This is Tim speaking. The septic is too close to the OHW, and so that's part of the variance. Since you do have that certificate of compliance, I'm okay myself with it being there, but if we were to move forward on this, same with the house, I would say it would need to be put into compliance. That would be moving it into a place that meets setback, the same with the structure, and that would probably mean no future subdivision, no future guest house, because we don't have a plan of where the house would go. If we allowed this and the house burnt down or something, I would have a condition that the house be moved to a compliant setback. But also, I'd have a condition that they... Maybe word it in a way that if they were ever to ask to subdivide or put a guest house, that they do a plan for where... A memorialized plan for the new place to go. Something like that. I know it's complicated, but it's complicated.
Eric, this is Veronica speaking. At this time, if a property owner had 14 acres of property, is this particular piece able to be subdivided?
Eric speaking. No, it is not because it doesn't meet the ordinance's road access requirement.
Road access, so it can't ever... Yeah, I was going to say, I don't think that was an issue, so...
Okay.
Could it be done with a conditional use permit?
No. Conditional use permit isn't used for a subdivision. You would need to apply and receive variance from that requirement that it have road frontage in order to subdivide an island.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Just generally speaking, I don't think that condition would be necessary...
Right.
Just because they would have to have a variance anyhow, but it was a good...
Yeah, well, I was thinking.
Yes.
This is Ken, our question. You indicated you were, when you did the application, which is about a year after the ordinary high-watermark change, that you were not aware of that, and that when you submitted your drawing was on it, you were assuming the original ordinary high-water level?
That's why I had Laird out there early, because I knew it was going to be tight. I didn't realize what the problem was until 2011, 2012, when I started researching why I was so out of compliance, and I don't know if the DNR has any... They don't have to tell anybody they're moving the high-water mark up, but I also say in 2006, you know, we only pulled 100-foot tape, I just held, and there was no stakes put in or anything. And you look at technology now, where they can pull it down, they know where that 1428.3 is in probably 10 minutes, but you could... Like Tim said, you could pull that tape from 10 different directions.
Question is, the drawing on your site planned that you applied, the 102 feet, you assumed the original or old ordinary high-water marks, not the new ones?
Correct.
Okay. You were not... You weren't living here at that time?
I was working full-time in Alaska, and when I got all my permits, I basically did 80% of the work myself, so it was... I mean, no, I was not here, I was not here at all, except for working.
That issue with the elevation of Lake Beltane was a major issue at a county level, county commissioner level, in the papers and stuff. Almost anybody who was living here permanently at least would have been well-aware of what was going on on Beltane.
I know that things were going crazy on Beltane when they had that work permit and they were going to go in all that. I was very aware of all that, you know, because that was a big... Beltane goes up and down, still goes up and down tremendously. I just don't know what you guys... I don't know what ordinary high-water mark technically speaks. You know, the DNR said it's at this, but do they... And they say it's based on a period of time. What is that, five years, 50 years? How long they've been recording levels of the water? So I took it upon what Laird told me, and I dealt with him with the house permit and all that, and Laird was a good guy, don't get me wrong. Laird was a good guy, he wanted to work with you and stuff like that. But, yeah, I think there was mistakes made, and I've been trying to... I've been fighting this for 15 to 18 years, and I mean, I don't... I don't know. We've lived in the house for 15 years, but, okay, I don't know.
Eric, question for you, coming back to Tim's point. The violation was documented in 2012. Nothing was done for what, 70? in 2012, nothing was done for what, seven years on the part of the county, is there any reason?
The county wasn't, uh, made aware of the issue until we first sent Mr. Navertel out there.
Okay.
With it being on an island, it's even more difficult for the county to become aware of this. And so, you know, we'll go out and inspect, but it's usually complaint driven is how we find out about things, given the size of the county and the number of lakes, it's, we don't have the resources to go out and inspect every permit. And it is the landowner's responsibility to know the rules and comply with them, that's the way state law looks at it.
The, the drawing that, um, came that was done by Matt Murray, uh, surveyors, would indicate when, uh, it's not a net, uh.
Kevin Lindau did, uh.
Uh, Lindau, not, not Murray. That would indicate that your basic house, except for one small corner, did in fact fit inside the original ordinary high watermark levels.
Yep.
And that's what you were presumably assuming when you did your application.
No, I did that afterwards, trying to find a solution for this issue.
That is true though, Ken is saying is true.
What I'm, what I'm saying is that.
Based on the survey, we thought the old high water level was what we were going by.
That, that if you were unaware of the change and nobody pointed it out to you and you built your house to the old requirements, you basically fit inside, except for the patio and decks and stuff that were added, you did fit, that 70 by 30 that Laird said would fit, did in fact basically fit before the ordinary high watermark changed.
Correct.
Okay. To me, the, if I followed that line, the issue to me is the extensions you put in in terms of patios and decks and stuff are the real violation, if I go back to the original order.
I, I guess I'll say this, Ken, the, 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 the plan was submitted to the county. It did not say decks on it, it did not say kitchens, it did not say living rooms, there were no dimensions, but the county accepted that.
Yeah, but you, you gave dimensions to the outside of any structure that you were gonna build, so. I'm, okay.
This is Veronica speaking, I just have another question. So again, I, I understand Ken's point with the decks and such, and we do understand, according to your application, and the ordinary high watermark at, in 2006, so the old mark, it does look like you had every intention of your house being in the proper location. When did you put the decks in? I mean, it was the same timeframe as your house?
I, I will, uh, it was sometime after I got the house framed up because the, the deck on the east, a lot of my, the deck on the east, I had some stuff left over, treated stuff left over and it was designed around the inventory I had left over. And I know the deck or platform on the west side was, uh, two, a lot of that was probably two years afterward, I don't know, it was, they were.
Veronica, there is a drawing or a picture in the packet that shows the deck, but no patio in December of 2011.
Okay.
So the deck, the deck was on the building in 2011, based on the one picture, somewhere, somewhere in the inch and a half of paper i- is the deck, but the, but the patio on the east side was not, that I could see.
This is Veronica speaking, I was just trying to get some, the entryway, cause you do have that lower level entryway, so I was under the impression that that side of the house with the concrete patio that you told us where the water went in and soaked down through the sand, that appeared to have been there for quite some time because it was part of constructing the house.
And that is true.
Some positive things to go, that I have some statements, um, because your isle, your, the island makes up 14 to 15 acres in size, uh, you are 20 feet above, the rise above the lake level, the topography, as I mentioned earlier, I don't see any issues even though they, again, we don't see any permits, permits are much necessary, we didn't see the documentation, so in, in the future, if there's ever anything construction wise, go to environmental services first, but this situation itself, I didn't see personally any reason, um, to deny the after the fact because it's, there's no detrimental harm to the, the lake. I didn't see any runoff going anywhere because of the topography. Uh, understandably so, yes, you are out of compliance because they do exceed the, uh, ordinary high watermark, but in this situation, it's not harming anything at, lake wise, right at this time. I don't foresee, I'm personally okay with approving the application as submitted, I do have some questions if there's any type of conditions, um, but at this time, I am okay with that. As far as the septic goes, uh, that's your area of expertise, if you had any questions or comments or concerns.
This is Tim, and like I had tried to explain before, probably didn't do a good job, but, um, that's why, I don't know, could you, on this property, could he submit a, a per, uh, an application to you to put up a metal building with the, a guest house in it, with a bathroom inside of it on that island?
Once the violations are addressed, yes.
So that's my point, if something happened to the structure and he needed to set it back, and he went ahead and developed ahead of time before anything happened, where would he put the house to move it into compliance if, if the house burnt down where it's at? The one he's using. So Mike, I, the only condition I was talking about is not allowing to take up that property with anything.
Can I, I, I will assure you after what I've went through, that I'm going to put it somewhere else with a, a septic, thank Tim.
This is Ken, um, I'm, I know I was asking tough questions, I'm kind of on the side of where Veronica is, if you look at the shoreline, it is pretty much buffered, uh, given what's there, uh, but then I also follow on what Tim has to say in that, I think, um, oh, I got one other question, there is an alternate drain site, obvi- or drain field site on this property, that's not a problem, but I think some constraints in terms of if this ever had to be rebuilt, it would have to be, it could not be rebuilt in the same location, but rather would have to be compliant, um, and no guest cabin and no future subdivision could be give ups, uh, that would mitigate, uh, allowing what, what is now in existence, is kind of what I'm thinking.
No, I, I, no guest cabins if, I, I'm, I mean, I thought that Eric just said if this, wow, whatever, I'll just be quiet, okay.
Okay, this is Larry, in the interest of being done sometime before 10 o'clock. I would, and I realize that coming up with, uh, the findings of fact is gonna be a bit of a challenge, so we'll probably have to team up on this a little bit, but I would entertain a motion on this variance.
Well, this is Veronica speaking, I think before a motion is going to be made, that we need to be clear on those conditions, on any conditions. I personally am not in favor of putting a condition that he cannot have a guest cabin, cause if he has 14 acres and he has a suitable area, if I had 14 acres on, and had a suitable area, I wouldn't want restrictions placed on me, just because I happen to be in violation. And I'm, we're, right now, working through the right way to clear it up.
The only, the only condition I think would make sense, that is if something happened to this house, it burnt down or whatever.
I'm in favor of that, if it needs to be.
That it has to be rebuilt in compliance, uh, whereas normally a structure could be built to the same footprint, but because of the extensive incursion into the setbacks, pretty extreme, I'd like to at least see the condition that if the house ever has to be rebuilt, it has to be built in compliance, so setbacks.
I'm, I'm in favor of that, however, I haven't seen on the map where that location would be.
I would probably put it on the northwest corner of the island.
Yeah, so it'd be, yeah.
Don't even think about it, the house, the house isn't gonna burn down. You guys are kind of setting food.
You could build it farther up, closer to the drain field where you were, that would be.
I would, I would, I would, I would put a new drain field in to, it'd be new, completely, wherever we compromise on.
So I'm gonna make a motion.
Yes, sure, this is Veronica, I make the motion that we approve the after the fact, um, variance application. I do not see any need for the condition for a buffer as the applicant has shown that they have maintained the entire nearly 14, 15 acres in a natural state and due to the topography, and I did not see any, any type of runoff during the lot views. Um, if a condition be placed that if the structure, um, was ever to be in a fire or anything like that, um, removed, whichever, then it would have to be moved to a location that meets the setbacks, ordinary high watermark setbacks. I don't think there's any other conditions that needed to be applied at this time.
Uh, the, Tim, it, Tim speaking, if the septic fails, he'd have to get a permit and it'd have to meet setback anyway.
Correct, exactly, yeah. Okay, and with the findings of facts, we can go through those together. Uh, again, also if, is anyone opposed to any other structures being placed on the property then? Okay, thank you. Number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intents of the official controls. Uh, the property is 14 to 15 acres in size, uh, the island has 20 foot rise above the lake and there are no wetlands or incompatibility issues placing the septic or the structure on the island, so it's currently, where it's currently placed, it is maintaining. Do we need to add anything else in there in regards to any other violations?
Just that, um, the, um, there's no, the, a very minimal slope, um, I had down and, and that it is a sand, so that runoff isn't a concern.
Number two is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control. Yes, having an improved lot on the island with septic and residential housing is a reasonable use of the 14 acres. Having those lakeside decks and platforms are also reasonable. And due to the ordinary high watermark changes, um, that has created some of the problems with the, meeting the setback. Any other comments towards that?
Are you on three?
I'm on number two.
On number two. Um, yeah, um, a residence on 14 acre island is reasonable.
Yep, okay. And number three is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners.
This is Larry, I have the need for the variance is driven mostly by the ordinary high watermark being changed, um, to me, that's not something that the, um, property owner created, um.
Being unique, it is an island, so.
On the peninsula.
And the, the owner being out of state, um, just like the logistics of even being there to get there.
Okay, I will adopt that with what Larry said and also with the property being located on the peninsula created these issues as well. And number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character and locality? Yes. All of the, the neighboring properties have lakeside decks and platforms.
And the lake is surrounded by your round residences.
Yes. Thank you, Ken, or thank you, uh, Tim. And number five, will adopt staff's findings. Does he have a second?
This is Larry, I'll second that motion. So we have a motion and a second to accept this variance, um, with, did we, no condition, correct? Or, no.
Yes, yes, the one condition.
The one condition that is if the house ever needs to be rebuilt for any reason, it will meet setbacks.
Correct.
Um, all right, having that, uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on, we have one other old business variance, amended variance application 13 dash V dash 25 by MJK Living Trust, lots 15 and 16 of Block 1, Sunny Point Edition, section 21 Township 139, range 33 of Crow Wing Lake Township on 2nd Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel 06.37.01300, applicant is requesting a variance from section 502.2 of the Shoreline Management, ordinance for a proposed addition to a dwelling that will encroach into the 100 foot ordinary high watermark setback. Um, name and address please and go ahead and describe the variance you're applying for.
Uh, Matthew Coonard, uh, 12443 Beach Drive in Nevis, um, this is the, this is for this green porch, um, that had, was back on the, was it the March calendar? It was not last one, but the previous calendar, um, and based on the direction of the board, uh, moved it to the current location where it's shown on the drawings.
Okay, board have any questions immediately?
This is Tim, do you, do you plan on, uh, are you still, uh, planning on cutting out any part of that existing deck to offset the, your new proposal?
No, not, not at this time, no.
Okay.
And this is Veronica speaking, just for, um, just for statement.
Uh, if, if I could jump back, I apologize for interrupting, with, with the porch being placed on the deck now, where it is, um, I'm losing that portion of the deck over there, so that was kind of the thinking before, when the deck was being shown on the north side.
You're gaining a roof over it.
Yes, yes, exactly, yep.
Okay, this is Veronica speaking, just for the record, uh, as explained, the application was first considered by the board at the April 28th, 2025 meeting, we tabled it, um, and instructed the, them to submit an amended application with the three season porch location on the house existing lakeside instead, um, just because, mainly was because of that side lot line setback, we have a lot of hard times, you know, encroaching towards the neighboring property, so I appreciate that, um, that you amended that and kind of went with our feedback, so that was, that was great, thank you.
Um, this is Larry, opening for public comment, if anybody has anything. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Any other discussion on this variance?
Uh, th- this is Ken, I think at the last meeting, I was probably the one that was most interested in whether you could in fact build it where it would be leg- legally or according to ordinance, if it were built in that slot in the, that's the southwest corner, I think, um, and I was kind of pushed hard, uh, when we were back out there, um, I do. I do agree that, uh, it could be intrusive to the neighbor. There happen to be neighbors in their patio, so I agree with you on that. Also, uh, that would add in, you know, another hundred and forty-four some squeet, square feet of impervious surface. Whereas putting it on the deck, um, will not. So I've come around to believing that even though it's not desirable to build structure lakeward, I think it's a better solution than toughing it in that corner, so I am supportive of, of the application.
Any other questions?
No, again, this is Veronica speaking, I just wanted another, um, supportive statement here that the variance thirty-nine dash B oh four authorized converting this lot into an improved lot and the construction of the house on the lot, so in two thousand and four, a building permit was issued for the house. And at that time, the ordinance allowed and staff issued the permit for the twelve by thirty-eight lakeside deck. So I agree, like Ken had mentioned, we're not creating any more impervious surface, we're just changing out, you know, some of its components with the roof. One question I have for you, Mr. Coonard, is, is it still intended to be strictly a three season screened in porch as your application states?
That's correct, the three season porch. It's, it's not going to be constructed in, in a manner that it could be closed in.
Nothing for the winter time?
Exactly.
Perfect, that. On the application, on one section I saw here that we have in front of us where the stairway, are you just going to move the stairway over and keep the stairway going out towards the lake like it shows in this photo?
Yes, it's just going to be shifted over.
Okay, perfect. Okay, and then?
Shifted over how, which?
If you're, if you're looking lakeside, if you're on the deck and you're looking lake, towards the lake, it would be shifted to the left.
Okay, from the drawing here to the left?
It'll probably lose a, a step or two because of the, because of the grade of the property.
So currently, it comes out at the corner, Ken, and it's going to be moved over. I'm open to a condition then, just for future that we place on here that the, if it gets approved, then the twelve by twelve three season porch must remain three season only and not converted into year round use. Do you understand that?
I do, and that's fine.
Okay, thanks. Are you ready for a motion?
I would be, yes.
Okay, this is Veronica. I make a motion to approve the amended variance application thirteen dash V dash twenty-five with the twelve by twelve three season porch located on, uh, the deck as presented in the site, the new site plan. With the condition that the twelve by twelve three season screened porch must remain three season only and never converted into year round use. And for the findings of facts, number one is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. Yes. In consideration of the, uh, the lots not conforming width and the, and rather than in addition increasing the width from the variance thirty-nine oh B oh four, um, and encroaching into the side lot line setback utilizing the existing deck and closing a twelve by twelve portion for the three season porch is in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the official controls. Number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? Yes, and closing the twelve by twelve portion of the existing lakeside deck for the three season porch is a reasonable request. Utilizing that portion of the existing desk, deck will essentially maintain the same impervious surface in lieu of constructing the separate addition on the side of the house encroaching into the side lot line setback. Number three, is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners? Yes, the lot was platted in nineteen thirty-one and the existing house and deck were built per variance thirty-nine dash V oh four. And I'll adapt staff's numbers four and five.
This is Tim. I'll second that motion.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to approve this variance, um, and accept staff's finding of facts. Uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
And this is Larry. I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, sorry, lost where I was here. All right, uh, next one, we're going to new business. We have a variance application sixteen V, um, dash twenty-five by Walter Paylor. Lot sixteen, Bannister Stony Lake Edition, section one Township one thirty-nine, range thirty-four Hubbard Township on Big Stony Lake, a recreational development lake. Parcel fourteen dot, um, dot forty-eight dot zero one six hundred. Applicant is requesting part one and after the fact variance from section seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance for an addition in a non-conforming dwelling located in the shore impact zone and part two of variance from section seven oh three of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed lakeside deck on a non-conforming dwelling that exceeds fifteen percent of the dwelling's ordinary high watermark setback and would be located closer than thirty feet from the or, ordinary high watermark and to have a separate platform attached to the dwelling when only one deck or platform is allowed for the dwelling. State your name, address, and?
Do you want our home address or the lake address?
The home address, please.
Home address. Two six two five five, Sofis Anderson Road, Fergus Falls, Minnesota.
And?
Walter Paylor.
Brief description of the variance you're seeking, and you can also state your name.
Gene Paylor.
Very good, thank you.
Looking to put an addition on the cabin. We're trying to make it a year round home. Like to have a deck on the lakeside, small one, and then that patio, kind of in the L shape of the, of the addition and existing cabin.
Anybody have any questions?
This is Ken. The, uh, the, the issue, um, or the deck on the front, encroaches within the thirty feet minimum setback that, uh, a deck can have on a, um, an older structure. What's your intent with that deck? Is it just for getting out or do you intend to?
Place to go have coffee in the morning and piece of toast and just watch the world go by.
So it's more than just something to step out onto instead of a lawn?
Correct.
Um, this is, this is Larry. Just a question on the fact that you started before you got a permit and stuff. Any explanation for how we got there?
Probably carelessness on my part. I knew I needed to get a permit. I wasn't aware of variances that were going to be needed.
Yeah, because when we got the permit for the garage, the, it sounded, it, we told them then that we, we wanted to add on to the cabin and it sounded like we were far enough from the shore to do that later.
We found out differently.
Yeah.
All right, this is Larry. Just, um, looking at this, everything looks reasonable and you're not abusing things that make sense to have a deck out the back, I believe. Again, runoff issues and stuff seem to be mitigated and, and not going to be a problem. I would support this, both of these variances, I believe. Seeing no other questions at the moment, I will open for public comment. Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any other statements from the board?
Yeah, this is Veronica speaking. I agree, um, in addition to the rear of the cabin is a reasonable request and having the small eight by fourteen deck on the lakeside, the cabin is also reasonable given the cabin was built before the ordinance was enacted. So I agree, I think this, the both requests are reasonable and I'm supportive.
This is Tim. I agree.
And it looks like this is Veronica speaking again, that we're still under the impervious surface.
Looking for a motion?
Yes, I would be open to a motion.
This is Ken. I, um, make a motion that we accept, uh, this application, sixteen V twenty-five, uh, and accept the staff's findings of fact.
This is Veronica. I second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept this variance, um, with no conditions and accept staff's finding of facts. Ken, how do you vote?
Did you say Tim?
I said Ken. I threw a wrench in the system.
You, you jerked it. This is Ken. I vote to approve.
Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim. I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
This is Veronica. I vote aye.
This is Larry. I also vote aye. Thank you very much. So we're okay to continue forward.
Gets tricky on us.
This is Veronica speaking. You will get a, a letter from the environmental services department stating what was done tonight, approval of your variance application, and then it will give you the procedures, what to do next, that you still need to get your permits.
Oh, okay, okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on. We have variance application seventeen dash V dash twenty-five by Tom and Marnie. Sorry if I'm butchering that. Butte, parts of government lot one, section nineteen Township one forty, range thirty-three and part of government lot five, section twenty Township one forty, range thirty-three. Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake. Parcels twenty-one dot nineteen dot zero zero one zero zero and twenty-one dot twenty dot zero three one hundred. Applicants are requesting variances from part one, section seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming structure located in the shore impact zone and part two, section seven oh three of the shoreline management ordinance to have more than one deck within the one hundred foot ordinary high watermark setback on a dwelling built prior to July twelfth of nineteen seventy-one. Any questions? Oh, sorry. Name and address and a brief description of the variance, please.
Thomas Butte, my wife, Marnie couldn't make it, she was working tonight. Two two seven four four County eighty in Nevis. We've owned house since twenty seventeen and, um, we've noticed some problems with it and this resolves a lot of the problems that, uh, kind of go with the, uh, the water runoff, from the rough lines all coming together. And it'll pitch it away from, from the lake, um, even with the garage there, it'll, uh, it should help mitigate some of the water that, uh, that goes towards the lake. We'll, we'll have everything guttered and, and runoff, uh, the opposite direction.
This is Veronica speaking. Is this a year round residence?
It's going to be our forever home, yes. Uh, we have another five years or, or less and we'll, we'll be up here one hundred percent of the time. And we just want to make it one level living for us and, and, uh, make the garage accessible for two cars and the, the snow blower, lawnmower attachment that we have for the long driveway and, and a small little shop in the garage, so. That's where all the water runs off right now. Just goes right, funnels right through there, no matter what we do. The sidewalk is too high for, uh, it's, it's about the same height as the siding, so, we only could get maybe an inch and a half pitch in that, uh, fifteen foot area. Tried to get it to run off, but it still pools in there.
This is Ken. Um, I can, I can see your desire to, um, expand your garage, especially if you're there full time. And of course, uh, that little, uh, entryway fix. I do believe you could fix your water problem if you just took the end caps off of your gutters and let it flow out instead of trying to run it all back to that one little location. I have a similar situation on a house and the only, with all the pine needles and stuff, the only solution is, is to, uh, if you go back to the picture, Eric, of the gutters, one, well, there. If you took those two end caps off and let the water run out or extend them a little bit, they wouldn't all, everything otherwise is running right to the back and I can see where you get the, the buildup, so.
And that, that is true, but the, the ground underneath that is almost level. So the sidewalk is the same height as the, is the, um, the siding.
I thought when I looked at it, if you extended those gutters a couple of feet, it would run away, but, uh, what I'm saying is, I don't think just fixing that problem is enough of a reason to do the expansion. I think the expansion is reasonable otherwise. So, okay.
Eric, can you slide the picture to that back deck once, please? No, the drawing, the, the proposed new deck on the back. That, is that a bedroom right off where that new deck is planned?
Yes, that's, uh, the master suite, yeah.
This is Larry. My only comment on that new deck, which it is essentially equal with the other deck and stuff, but it, it is something that is the second deck, which is technically not allowable. Are you really, really hanging your hat on wanting that deck bad?
Uh, it was just something that was proposed when we, we did the drawings and, we wanted the windows is the main thing for that room. And, and the sliding glass door there was, I mean, you have to have a, something there to, to protect you, so. Uh, that's why we put the deck there is for the, for the glass for that room.
Any other questions quick from the board?
Yeah, I'm trying to remember the, the, um, what is the setback? The dwelling thirty feet from the lake, right? And you're extending now more towards the lake with that second deck. And the second deck is, uh, usually only allowed one. I'm not so sure I'm supportive of that second deck, being that close to the, uh, to the lake and into the shore impact zone. I don't know how the rest of you feel, but I, I.
That's kind of where I was going also, Ken.
Is he, uh, this is Tim. Is he allowed a certain amount anyway because of it being an exit?
There's currently just a window there, so that.
Oh.
There isn't a sliding door there.
I will open for public comment. Yep, to the present, the table there, please. State your name and address, and please write it in the log for us also.
I'm Dick Olson, and I am next door neighbor to Tom. We live at two-two-seven-eight-zero, County Road eighty. My wife, Janice, is here with me. We've been neighbors now, we've been there since two thousand and seven, and we were supportive of John Smith when he added the rock wall that you're currently seeing. However, we've been in that house many times, and with the storms, and that, the idea that he could have an ice dam is frightening to me, because we just had that in a very nice house in Grand Forks, and it cost us forty-two thousand dollars to fix the wood on the front, to fix the basement, to fix the walls inside. He has a very real problem with that entryway, and he has a very real need for the garage. I won't speak to the deck, that's superfluous to what my thoughts are, but we are very supportive, because we've been there, because we've seen it over the years, and because they do come up during the winter, too. And if that ice dam were to occur, and we had it a year ago in Grand Forks, we had a hundred of them, it was a mess. And so, anything he can do to mitigate that potential, you know, I would urge you to consider and assist him in accepting that application.
Very good, thank you.
Any questions?
You have to fill that out.
Any other public comment? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Any other questions from the board?
I'll make a motion.
I would be open to a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve application seventeen V twenty-five without the deck on the lakeside of the house, if that's okay with you, on the lakeside of the house. I need a second, and then I'll do the findings of fact.
This is Tim, I'll second it. And then I'll second when you do the findings.
I'm trying to say which direction you approve those. Okay, is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and intent of official controls? I say yes. In addition to the rear of the house, the correction water management problem meets all SSTS setbacks and is compliant with impervious surfaces, impervious surface requirements is in harmony with the Shoreland Management Ordinance. Number two is a property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not by permitted by an official control. And I would say yes, the rear side expansion to expand the garage and solve the water management problem is reasonable. Number three is a need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior property owners. The answer is yes, the current structure is in the shore impact zone, and therefore requires a variance to expand, and we'll accept number four and five as the recommendations from the staff.
This is Tim, I'll second that.
Okay, this is Larry, we have a motion and a second to approve part one of this variance, and deny part two. Can we do that as one, or do we have to look at them separately?
You can do it as one, I would recommend adding to the findings to speak to the deck, specifically as well.
Okay. Was that your intent, Ken, to approve the first part and not the deck for the second part?
Yes. I mean, that's why I made the motion, approval without, so you could say...
I thought you included, excluded the deck when you did that.
We did, so we just need to put in some statements in there why we're excluding the deck. Yep, so, because the dwelling is located in the shore impact zone at the thirty-one foot ordinary high-water mark, and it was built prior to the Shoreland Management Ordinance, allowing only one deck, I agree with that, and because it is in that ordinary high-water mark, it needs to remain that way, and that's why we're denying it.
Findings of fact for the denial?
Yeah, that's what I mean, yeah, for number one, is it in harmony, is the variance in harmony with the general purposes and intent, the intent of the Shoreland Management prior to the ordinance, or when this was built, one deck was allowed, and I think that's how it should remain, because it's in the ordinary, the thirty-one foot ordinary high-water mark setback. Do you want to just, do we just need to add that to it, or do we need to keep going with all of them, then?
It'd be good to answer each of the questions for the deck as well.
Okay.
Do we vote on part one, and then go on to two?
Yeah, I was gonna say, should we start over at this point?
I think you're okay, if you want to just continue with answering the other findings for the deck, so we have our yeses for the addition, then if we get nos for the deck, then that supports the motion.
Okay. Ken, do you want to continue with your nos for the deck, or do you want help, or?
You can do the denial one if you want.
Okay, continuing then, do you have any comments, Mike? You're good? Okay. Then number two, is the property owner proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner, not permitted by an official control? I guess we're gonna have to say...
Say no, it's encroaching on the ordinary high-water mark?
Currently, the current decks, there's currently already one deck located on the structure, and a second deck is not necessary, since we're already encroaching in the ordinary high-water mark setback. Is the need for a variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current or prior owner? That one is yes, because the variance is needed for any expansions to the legal non-conforming structures built prior to the Shoreland Management Ordinance, which was July twelfth, nineteen seventy-one. Number four, will the issuance of the variance maintain the essential character of the locality? Again with, and I'm open for support here.
Technically, that one could be a yes, but with the other two being nos, it doesn't matter, so.
Okay, we'll go with yes, the proposed porch will not change the locality mix of the year-round, however, due to the ordinary high-water mark setback.
You should be saying the proposed front deck. There's a porch, the screen porch, probably what I'm saying.
Correct, yes.
That's the way it's described, it's described as a deck.
Proposed lakeside deck.
Yes.
The proposed lakeside deck, I think, would be the best thing to say.
And then number five, we can adopt staff's findings.
Okay, we have a motion, can we, do we have a second?
This is Tim, I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept everything on the part one of the variance, to add the garage and change the entry and whatever else is entailed there.
Screened in porch.
Screen porch. But we are denying the bedroom deck on the lakeside. Okay. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
This is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much, and yes, you will get a letter from Environmental Services telling you where to go from here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on. Variance application eighteen V dash twenty-five by Crow Wing Crest Lodge, part of government lot one, section fifteen, township one forty-one, range thirty-two, Akeley Township on Eleventh Crow Wing Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel oh-one dot fifteen dot zero seven ten. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh one of the Shoreland Management Ordinance, to replace the structure devoted to a non-conforming use. Name and address and a brief summary of your variance, please.
Sure. My name is Kim Bowen, and I own Crow Wing Crest Lodge in Akeley, Minnesota, three-one-one-five-nine, County Road twenty-three, in Akeley. And yes, we're taking an old, we'd like to take an old cabin down and replace it. We're trying to be as cognizant of the current footprint as we can, and we're just asking a little bit wider and deeper, in order to accommodate two things. One is wheelchair accessibility. I want to make sure that all my bedroom doors have enough space for thirty-six inches, and a turning radius of about five feet for the bathroom. And then the second reason is to conform to Minnesota Department of Health regulations, where bedrooms' size need to be a hundred and twenty square feet for two people in a bedroom. We're asking for a little bit higher roof, like a standard roof pitch, so whatever that means, I'm not a roofer, so I don't know, as shallow as we can get away with is fine with me. I think the proposal is eighteen feet, is what we're thinking we can get away with. Just in comparison, the cabins on either side are twenty-one. So, the deck, we're actually asking for, or we're not even asking for this, it's actually gonna be shallower, the existing one is twenty-four by fifteen, and we're just wanting twelve by twenty-four. And we just want to move it over to one side, so we can have the wheelchair ramp on the other side there. And we kind of want it up a little bit off the ground, because the last cabin we built was on the ground, and all my guys are bitching at me because they can't get access under. So, we'd like to build it up a couple and a half feet, just so they can access under there. And that's a standard thing on both, actually, the three cabins right around it also do that, too, so it's not gonna be out of line or anything of that. It's not gonna look extremely different or anything. What else am I, I think that's pretty much, oh, a covered, the deck, we'd like it to be covered, so we want the roof to cover that, mostly for energy efficiency, is kind of where I'm coming with that. We already noticed that our last cabin that we did, that you guys very graciously approved, that covered deck, oh my gosh. We were worried that the three mini splits we put in each of the bedrooms wouldn't be enough to cool it down in the summer. No problem whatsoever. So, we kind of want to do that again, we thought that was a good idea. So, that's it.
Wonderful, thank you. Any questions from the board?
You're kidding?
This one is pretty straightforward, and again, as you stated, the two cabins have been replaced already, and met everything that was asked, so yeah, I think this one's fairly easy, from my point of view. Anybody else's comments? At this point, I'd open for public comment. Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any other questions or comments, or otherwise I would entertain a motion.
This is Veronica speaking. Again, like you mentioned, I'm in supportive of this as well, because we have been to the resort, we've seen some of the previous requests, and they've been working out well. I think this request kind of fits in that same thing, that's the resort use of the property is illegal non-conforming, and it predates the ordinance, so she has to come in for a variance every time, pretty much, that she wants to do anything to the cabins. And so, I appreciate that she's doing things in the proper direction, doing things the right way, and I am supportive of this, too. The cabin is, location itself well exceeds the one hundred foot ordinary high-water mark setback. The slightly larger dimensions are, like you mentioned, wheelchair accessible, that makes a big difference. So, yeah, I'm open to making a motion to approve the variance application and adopt staff's findings of facts.
This is Larry, I'll second that motion. We have a motion and a second to adopt variance application eighteen V twenty-five. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Yes.
Appreciate your advice, too, by the way. You're good with it, thank you.
Okay, we have variance application nineteen dash V dash twenty-five by Mike and Ann Cummins, part of government lot four, section six, township one forty-one, range thirty-three, Mantrap Township, and part of government lot eight, section thirty-one, township one forty-two, range thirty-three, of Thorpe Township on Mantrap Lake, a recreational development lake, parcels two-zero dot zero-six dot zero-one-nine-hundred, and twenty-six dot thirty-one dot zero-one-zero-zero-zero. Applicants are requesting a variance from sections five-oh-two-point-two, and nine-oh-four-point-six of the Shoreland Management Ordinance, for placing two accessory structures within one hundred feet of the ordinary high-water mark setback, and to make the properties non-conforming, impervious surface area percentage more non-conforming. State your name and address, and a brief summary of the variance, please.
Eric Munson, one-eight-four-seven-five, Elmwood Road, Nevis, Minnesota. We are looking to give these folks a smaller garage, just inside the hundred foot. Where the proposed garage is, there's an existing fish cleaning shack, six by twelve, we want to move that right against the backside, and you can see the dimensions, it's gonna be ninety-six and ninety-three foot. Encroached in, the new shed meets all township setbacks, Thorpe and Mantrap. We've got letters of approval from both of those gentlemen. So, this is the biggest garage that they can get, they desperately need to get storage on the property, there is no other storage. So, they're asking for two parts of this variance. What is shown in that picture right there is the existing fish cleaning shack moved closer to the lake, and building a new carport. The second part is the impervious surface. We found out the day that I was turning in the application, that there was some impervious that was missed. Now, the owners did comply with the previous variance of removing impervious to meet those dimensions, so Cal and I talked with Eric, and I went back out there the last minute. I measured it up, and we are four percent with what's proposed here, four percent over impervious, so we're asking for a variance request of twenty-nine percent. There is other pavers and stuff that can be removed. The owners have also talked about the shoreline on the, basically straight to the, where the bluff is, right down to the lake, it's deteriorating terribly, and so they would be open to the idea of planning some sort of shrubbery or something there to try to reinforce that, if it helps with the impervious. Half the buildings are guttered already, so if nor gutters are required. Looking at the lot, there's a nice, it's all, there's no way the water can actually slope into the lake. It is a nice topography where it goes up in a berm, stopping all of the water. That's our request.
Any questions from the board?
Go back to the drawing numbers. The staff report would indicate that the structure was ninety-five feet, and that with that, moving that shed, that would be at eighty-nine, and you showed it at ninety-three, ninety-six. Are these new?
It's Demi and I, Demi helped me measure, these are the stakes that I put in with Demi, when we went out there, and the building that they were proposing last year was moving that existing, much bigger building.
So, the correct numbers then are that the ten-by-twenty building is ninety-nine feet?
Yeah, it's like six inches by where we're measuring, yeah.
Oh, okay, and if you move that six-by-twelve building, it would be ninety-three and ninety-six, not eighty-nine. Okay.
Correct.
This is Larry, basically, the part that you felt you missed on the impervious was that sidewalk that went toward the lake, which is not a solid concrete.
Right.
It's separated blocks.
Yep, eighteen-inch blocks was separation, and then the lake deck, the platform out there, that was also missed, so those are the two things that are really kicking our butts.
The discussion around, if you did what you're proposing, you'd be adding two-hundred square feet of impervious surface, but I think when we were all out there, it was pretty clear to us, there was no way water from a... water from a rain was going to run into the lake. So whether it's a little bit over the requirement probably has no impact to the lake. Is that, I think, what we all observed? Okay. That six-by-twelve shed, what's in there? Is it just a shed shed, or it was one time called a fish house?
They call it the fish cleaning shack, to be honest, I've never been in it. Yeah.
Just more storage space?
Probably more storage, yeah. And when we were out there, we observed the door was locked. I was trying to get in with you guys, and it was locked. All we could do is peek into the windows.
Um, open for public comment at this time? Seeing none, I will close public comment. Any other questions or observations?
This is Veronica speaking. Eric, can you go to some of the photos, please, and show me the one that shows the metal shed? I wasn't there during that views. So is that shed still currently there, this one here where you're always?
Correct.
You did say it was moving, though, correct?
It's, yeah, it's part of the previous variance denial where, where location it's-
Right, that's what my question was, it's not removed yet, then?
Yep, yep. And I think they've got another three or four weeks. I think it's coming up, or a year deadline or something, it's coming up pretty quick.
This is Ken, I have a thought, I don't know whether, I realize a ten-by-twenty shed kind of squeezes, and they'd like to keep that other shed to put things in. I, maybe I shouldn't propose this, but I've been thinking, I'd much rather get rid of that shed and maybe consider a couple more feet on the width of the shed to make it a twelve-by-twenty, and I know it encroaches two more feet into the side lot, and gives you that little bit extra space. I think it would clean up the overall setbacks and what we'd like to accomplish, because I'm not in favor of just moving that shed around to the other side, and so on. I don't know, everybody, we're not supposed to be solving problems, but when I look at what you're trying to do and what's there, I think it would be much more clean and amenable if that shed went away and we gave you a couple more feet on the side, or not give it to you at all. I don't know what everybody else feels or thinks, or whether I'm off-base, Eric, or not in proposing that, but-
Actually, this is Tim, I never thought of that, but I would agree with that, Ken.
Yeah, the ten-foot wide shed, I mean, there's no garage on that property.
No.
And you'd probably get a boat in there, and that's about it, and you have more things to store. So I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what should you think.
This is Veronica speaking, this is a cabin, so it's not a year-round residence, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I think if I recall, one of the reasons why we denied the shed, the garage previously back in twenty-twenty-four was because it is a seasonal cabin, and there are places that you can store your boats and stores such, was why we did not allow them, because of the impervious surface that they've already created. I did not review the minutes from twenty-twenty-four to state that, but I do believe that was one of our situations, why we requested that to be removed. And at that time is when I believe some of that other impervious surface was documented that was closer to the lake, that platform and such. So I am not in favor of increasing the impervious surface. I'm going to stick with what I kind of went with back in twenty-twenty-four.
I was looking at adding forty square feet and getting rid of seventy-two from that other structure was a win, that's all.
I believe that was part of our mitigation before, was to move that fish house, and at that time, they didn't want to. I mean, omitting that fish house, that little cleanup shack entirely is a plus, and then making, I wouldn't increase the size. I mean, I definitely have to give up some, because again, the impervious surface is such a small lot already, and there's so much going on, on the property, when we go back to the overhead view of what's on there. The site plan.
Just to continue the conversation, would they be open to a larger, I assume they would be open to a larger shed?
Of course.
Yes, okay.
And we do have permission from Thorpe Township to encroach on that side lot line already as well, but with the county variances, Veronica's stating, you guys weren't in agreement with that at the time.
Correct. The other issue with this other shed was that it was actually over the property line, if I recall, correct? Yes, okay, that, that was zinger, why it had to go.
Yeah, it's got-
Yes, okay. Um, have we done public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments or thoughts? This is Larry, I guess I, too, would be open to a, a bigger shed if we got rid of the fish cleaning shack, just to clean it up so that we don't have another building sitting there. Can we legally do that without changing this variance, amending it?
If you're looking at allowing a larger structure than the ten-by-twenty proposed, and that would involve going into one or both the side lot and rear setbacks, we would need to table it so that we could amend the public notice to say that that's what they're requesting.
Okay, that's what I wondered.
I don't know that there'd be any concerns from the neighbors, but we still due process, need to give them the opportunity in case they would take issue with going into those setbacks.
Okay.
Or you could approve it as presented with the condition that fish house has to be removed.
Right, yes. So a question back to you, do you want to do the song and dance to push it out another month? We table it?
The only request that I think Mike and Anne would, would ask for is, because the deadline to remove the existing one is fast approaching, could we table that just in case, you know, so we go out there one shot? If it's going to be a month and a half, because I think it's, I don't know when it is, do you have the date when it's supposed to be removed? Or is it, is it, it's going to be removed this summer, but I'm just asking that they won't get in trouble if it's another couple weeks?
Well, if we delay it, we exceed the required date for the old shed to be removed.
That's what, that's what I'm afraid of.
I think it would show good faith on their part to have it out.
Yeah, yes. Okay.
But again, I don't know what timeline you're on, because we are obviously pushing this back another month if we table this and bring it back up.
We just, they just really desperately want to get this all resolved. They inherited a nightmare down there, as you guys well know. I mean, they're trying to be, fix it all up and do it right. So, but yeah, I think it would be, so Eric, we would just get-
Just abandon the increasing it.
Right, then that's the other thing we can do, we can settle it tonight if we do not increase the size or anything.
Right.
And then give them the ten-by-twenty.
Their deadline was July thirty-one of last year, so they're already well past.
So it needs to go down? Okay, so we'll get on that.
This is Veronica speaking, are they open to just not having that little shed, that little?
They'd be amenable. Obviously, what we're proposing is we're, we're asking for what their best-case scenario. So I mean, if they had to get rid of the fish cleaning shack, there is no other place they could move it on the lot legally, so it would have to go away. And so I think that they would be amenable, but honestly, I think we should shelf it because I'd really like to talk to them about it, if I could. Is that a dumb idea?
If we, if we deny this one and they come back with a new variance, is that easier, more expensive? How, I, I don't know the procedure on that, I'm sorry.
They'd have to pay a new application fee, but it's easier for us to administer because we then don't have to make sure that we're staying on top of the sixty-day window to act on the application, and we don't have to re-notice.
So I know you guys are in a time crunch, so what if, if we approved the ten-by-twenty today, got rid of the fish cleaning shack today, is it even possible to ask, like, just to get this done and ask for a wider shed on a separate, would it be a township, or would that be another variance?
That would be another variance, is my understanding.
So it's another variance, no matter what, if we wanted to go with the wider shed?
Correct.
I think that they would probably take the ten-by-twenty and just be done.
Okay.
Okay.
Then, is there any other comments, otherwise I would be open to a motion?
How do we make a motion?
Same as last time.
Does somebody else want to try? Well, I'll make a motion that we, well, no. I can make the motion that we accept the application for a ten-by-twenty shed at the ninety-nine-foot setback from the lake, but as a condition, we require the removal of the fish house, or what is it, nine-by-twelve shed?
Whatever, yeah.
Can I make that as one, one motion?
Yep, as long as in your findings, you give the rationale for requiring the smaller one to be removed.
Well, requirements for denying the shed part, you mean, okay? Well, we'll try.
Ken, before you go forward, can I ask that you add a date to removing that time, that shed, since they've already exceeded the violation, then I think placing a date saying that-
I was going to add conditions.
Permit, can, yeah, it has to be, that fish house has, or that little building has to be removed before the permit can be pulled, with documentation's for ESO.
Let's try this, on the premise that you believe the owners are willing to go just with the ten-by-twenty, even if we ask for the removal of the fish shed?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to make a motion that we accept the application for a ten-by-twenty shed, ninety-nine feet from the lake, ten foot from the side lot line, with conditions that the existing, what should I call that, existing shed, the existing, I don't have to say anything about the existing shed that's already required to be removed, right?
Just the one little one that we're talking about.
No, not the small one, the big one that's there.
Right.
I don't have to say anything about that at all, okay. And that the six-by-twelve shed be removed. I think I stated this right, so we're approving a ten-by-twenty shed, ninety-nine feet from the lake, ten feet from the side lot, with the condition that the existing nine-by-twelve, or six-by-twelve shed be removed.
With a deadline date. With a date, a deadline date, either when the land use permit is pulled?
Um.
That's preferably right, type of thing.
Well, the current shed's got to be gone by July thirty-first, right?
Of last year.
Of twenty-twenty-four, I wasn't aware of that, for the record.
Okay, the existing building that's taken care of, that shed needs to be removed by August first of this year. They can't build a new one without removing that one, so they're going to move it to anyway, so I'll say August first of this year. Now, let me try. Is the variance in harmony with the general purpose and the intent of official controls? And I'll say yes. The, the proposed shed meets setback requirements, except for the ninety-nine feet, but it meets the other setback requirements. The amount of impervious surface in addition does not affect the lake in any form, and the removal of the nine-by-twelve shed also reduces the impervious surface, and therefore the application and new shed is in harmony with the official controls. Did I do okay?
Yes.
That sounded good to me.
Okay. Is the property owner proposing a property in a reasonable manner? Yes, having a storage shed for boat and/or lake supplies when there are no other storage facilities on the lot is a reasonable request? Is the need for the variance due to circumstances unique to the property and not created by the current owner? The answer is yes. Yes and no, but yes, it is that the lot is quite small and sixty-seven feet wide and a hundred-and-thirty-five feet deep, so yes, okay. That's basically the condition. And the last two items accept the staff's finding effect.
All right, we have a, um, wow.
Second.
Yes, do we have a second?
This is Tim, I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion to allow the ten-by-twenty shed to be built, meeting sideline setbacks, even though it's encroaching slightly on the OH, the ordinary high-watermark. The condition for this is that both buildings be removed before the land permit is issued, and also August first, whichever comes first. Does that all make sense? Okay. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken, how do you vote?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. You will get a letter from Environmental Services, thank you very much, Eric.
Okay, variance application twenty-v dash twenty-five by Austin Rittgers, part of northeast quarter of the southwest quarter, and part of Government Lot Three, Section Thirty-Six, Township One Forty-One, Range Thirty-Three, Manship, Mantrap Township on Owl Lake, a natural environment lake, parcel twenty dot thirty-six dot double oh seven ten. Applicant is requesting variances from Part One, Section five oh two point one of the Shoreline Management Ordinance to place a platform within the one-hundred-and-fifty-feet ordinary high-watermark setback, and Part Two, Section nine oh two of the Shoreline Management Ordinance for grading in a steep slope and within the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot ordinary high-water setback that will exceed permissible volume. State your name and address, please, and a brief description of the variance.
Austin Rittgers, two seven zero nine one, State thirty-four, Akeley, Minnesota. So we want to build a deck, with the existing deck right now is quite small and falling apart, rotting, and so we want to extend the deck, and then do cement underneath the deck and the wall to help with erosion possibilities.
Okay.
Katie Rittgers. In addition to that, we purchased this property a couple years ago, twenty-twenty-two, when we purchased the house, all the windows needed to be redone, you know, we added some different windows in, and I, I believe our deck is grandfathered in, that will run the length of the house, but we, we would like the, you know, the cement pad down below just to create just a little bit of space that we can kind of like enjoy on the lakeside. The, the slope is so dramatic when you, when you exit that side of the house, you, you can't really go outside and do really anything out there. Our youngest actually, like, when we're walking down to the lake, you have to hold his hand, otherwise he'll kind of do this rolling thing. So we're just asking for a little, a bigger cement patio down there, and then in order to accomplish that, we need to kind of build that boulder wall to hold, hold materials back.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
Not so much a question, just state a fact that the house is a hundred fourteen feet back from the ordinary high watermark and even the new platform would meet the hundred-foot setback. And that this particular property was built when the hundred-foot setback was in effect, but the ordinary high watermark was changed to a hundred fifty feet in April of nineteen ninety-one, which is what causes their practical difficulty.
Open for public comment at this time? Seeing none, we will close public comment. You're also applying to construct a retaining wall on the lakeside of the house. I see there's a hundred and nine cubic yards that's filled coming in, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
That would, well, the total number should include the rock and all the material needed.
Oh, okay, pretty good.
This is Veronica speaking, just a supportive statement, again, placing that ground level platform beneath the upper level decks, not going to change any impervious surface. The retaining wall will definitely give it some stability. I think that's important. I'm in favor of the application.
Make a motion.
I would entertain a motion, yes.
Well, I can do it if you want. Make a motion that we accept variance application twenty-v dash twenty, twenty-five as presented and that we accept the findings of fact from the staff report.
This is Larry, I'll second that. So we have a motion and a second to accept this variance, to add the patio beneath the deck and then also the retaining wall. Okay, uh, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much and you will get a letter from Environmental Services. Thank you. Variance application twenty-one dash v dash twenty-five by Lisa Tupa, lots four, five and part of lot six and part of outlot number two, the Eagle's Nest, section one township, one forty, range thirty-five, Todd Township on Fish Hook Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-seven dot four zero dot zero zero four hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from sections five oh two point two and seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance for a proposed addition to a non-conforming dwelling that would make the dwelling more non-conforming and encroach on the twenty-foot road right-of-way setback. Name and address and a brief description of the variance, please.
Uh, my name is Charles Lee, one five, one three, four, one hundred nineteenth Avenue, Park Rapids. We propose, what we would like to do is an addition onto this, a fourteen by sixteen, so they can have, add a bathroom and a mechanical room. But with that road encroachment, we would be encroaching that twenty-foot setback and the road is pretty much unusable, so we would like a variance for that.
Any questions from the board? Okay, open to public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment. Yeah, this is Larry, I was out there for lot views with the rest of them and this one to me looks like kind of a, pretty much a slam dunk. The road obviously will never be developed and definitely, um, within reason to ask for the things you want to add to the cabin, so I would be in support of this.
Ken, I agree.
All right, I would entertain a motion.
Why don't you just go ahead and make it?
Okay, I will make a motion. All right, I move that we accept the application for variance application twenty-one dash v dash twenty-five and accept staff's findings of facts.
Ken, I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye.
Thank you much.
Very good, thank you. All right, rolling along. Variance application twenty-two dash v dash twenty-five by Joanne Alma Hag Benjamin. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad. Part of government lot five, section seventeen, township one forty, range thirty-three, Nevis Township on Lake Beltane, a recreational development lake, parcel twenty-one dot one seven dot zero one seven hundred. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance for proposed structural alterations to a non-conforming dwelling located on the shore impact zone. Name and address and a brief description of the variance, please, that you're applying for.
Joanne Alma Hag Benjamin, two three oh four nine Emerald Lane, Nevis, Minnesota. I would like to repair the foundation on my guest house.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Open to public comment. Seeing none, we will close public comment. This one, this is Larry again, also this one looks pretty simple, it definitely needs to be done, you're not changing footprint of anything or anything, so yeah, I would be in support of this variance.
This is Veronica speaking, we've had a few of these, helicopiers around the foundations seem to be pretty helpful in restoring some of these cabins and I agree that during lot views, it was definitely noticed that that needs to be repaired and this would be a good situation, so I'm also supportive of the application. This is Veronica, I can make a motion to approve the application as presented and adopt the staff's findings of facts.
This is Tim, I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept variance application twenty-two dash v dash twenty-five. And we have a second, Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And Larry, I also vote aye. Very good, thank you.
Thank you and thank you for your service, all of you.
You like each other.
Saving the best for last.
All right, variance application twenty-three dash v dash twenty-five by Robert McLaren, part of government lot two, section five, township one forty-three, range thirty-two, Lakeport Township on Garfield Lake, a recreational development lake, parcel nineteen dot zero five dot zero zero one zero zero. Applicant is requesting a variance from section seven oh two of the shoreline management ordinance to rebuild and modify a portion of a non-conforming dwelling that is located in the shore impact zone. State your name and address and a brief description of your variance application, please.
Robert McLaren, I live in one one four Peaceful Streams, Delana Gage, Georgia, three oh five, three three. And it's my wife Judy. The variance is requested for, well, first reason was, when I bought the cabin, I was going to request it anyway, but then a tree decided to fall on it and it crushed the left side of it and moved it a little bit, about two inches to the right. And in doing that, it just really, excuse me, it just destroyed the structure inside. So we have to, I can't rebuild it because you guys saw it out there, it's just not really something you want to rebuild. It, it has to be torn down completely and then made to match the rest of the cabin so that the soffit goes all the way around and instead of having that flat roof on there, it would be nice to have, it looked like something, so that's why I asked for the variance to do this. It's on the opposite side from the lake, so it's not affecting any visual thing from the lake.
Any questions from anybody?
This is for Eric, I noted in the, in the staff report that the drain field is not compliant. Does that affect anything we do here or is that something you just handle separately? I guess the point is, do we need a condition that that be fixed before this can be done or do we not?
It's my understanding it has to be done in a year from, if this is approved.
The ordinance would require the septic to be upgraded before the entry permit could be issued.
So should we add that as a condition or that just pretty standard?
You can, but it's already addressed in the ordinance.
Okay.
Just for your information, the owner before this had this cabin for fourteen years and the reason he did not redo this room, which if you walked into it, is really a terrible place, he didn't want to spend the money on redoing the septic system because he knew it was going to fail and I did too. But I was going to go ahead and do it, but, and the tree fell on it, so now there's like three reasons I got to do it, so.
All right, we need to open for public comment. Seeing no one, we will close public comment. Any other questions or this one's pretty much a slam dunk too in my world, so I would move that we accept application twenty-three dash v dash twenty-five and accept staff's finding the facts.
This is Ken, I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept this variance. Tim, how do you vote?
This is Tim, I vote aye.
Ken?
This is Ken, I vote aye.
Mike?
Mike, I vote aye.
Veronica?
Veronica, I vote aye.
And this is Larry, I also vote aye. Thank you very much.
Okay, can it?
Where do we go here for two miscellaneous?
Yeah, what I would have for you is for those of you that haven't gotten back to me in regard to the fall land use train, let me know and then I'll be able to finish getting registrations for those who are able to make it. Otherwise, it's too early to say with any accuracy what the next month's agenda will look like, but I would imagine, given it's midsummer, it'll probably be healthy. That's all we've got.
Okay. Anything else, anybody? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have to do that? Meeting is adjourned.